Good evening, everyone. Chairman Greenwood is running a little bit behind and he'll be joining us just in a short bit. So we're going to go ahead and call this meeting of the June sixth Planning Commission meeting to order. Get a roll call, please.
Mr. Callum.
Here.
Ms. Height.
Here.
Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Sluter.
Here.
All right, next on the agenda is the review and adoption of the meeting agenda. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda for tonight? Any discussion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the meeting agenda.
Alright, motion made.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and properly second. Can we get a foot, please?
Ms. Height.
Ah.
Mr. Wagner.
Hi.
Mr. Sluter.
Hi.
Mr. Callum.
Hi.
Alright. Um, item four here, approval of the May second, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting minutes. Does everyone have a chance to review those? Any discussion? Alright, any motions to approve? Motion to approve, anybody?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes for the May second regular meeting.
Alright, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Or two seconds on that one?
Two seconds.
Alright, can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Wagner.
Hi.
Mr. Sluter.
Hi.
Mr. Callum.
Hi.
Ms. Height.
Ah.
Alright, this brings us to our citizens' comment period. This is an opportunity for an individual to speak three minutes on non-public hearing matters. We do have a public hearing tonight, so this is, um, this is just for items not concerning the public hearing. We will, uh, pass this on to Chairman Greenwood. We are at the, uh,
Great. Continue the citizens' comment period. One opportunity, three minutes per individual on non-public hearing matters, and we do have a public hearing tonight. So anything other than that, and if you're a citizen or whatever, state your name and your address, please, and we'll openly citizens' comment period right now. The audience, no, we switch through. Has anyone online?
No, sorry, no one signed up.
No one in the audience? Okay, that was quick. We will blow this citizens' comment period. Move on to public hearing. This is public hearing for Z zero one dash two thousand twenty-three, Kennington Place LLC with a CUP of oh, 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 two, two, oh, two, three, Kennington Place LLC. And same rules apply. One opportunity per citizen. Please state your name and your address, and they have three minutes per individual. We will now open public hearing. We have a list of sign-ins. Oh, we're going to talk first, I guess. I should have done that first. Hold on.
Had anybody sign up yet. So tonight, we have before you a partial rezoning on some property, and then a request for a conditional use permit. So the rezoning is to rezone nine point nine acres from B two to R one. And the request is so that they can apply for a conditional use permit for thirty-one age-restricted townhomes in the Kennington subdivision. The applicants have also submitted some proppers. There are four proppers that go with this, the conceptual plan, which states the property shall be developed in substantial conformity with the conceptual plan attached titled Kennington Townhomes dated April twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three, prepared by the Bay Companies, Inc. The second one, age restriction. Dwellings as shown on the concept plan are intended to be occupied only by persons age fifty-five years and older, and the occupancy of these dwellings shall comply with provisions of the Virginia Fair Housing Law filed at section thirty-six point nine, six, one, point one, and the Federal Fair Housing Act of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, related to housing for older persons as defined in the Virginia Fair Housing Law. A covenant shall be recorded and a homeowner's agency agent for the enforcement to limit the use and occupancy of the dwellings as specified herein. The third is recreational amenities, the recreational facilities as shown on the conceptual plan or as otherwise approved at the time of the subdivision shall be constructed at the expense of the property owner. And the last one, architectural treatment. The carriage home sites shall be developed consistent with and at the scale as reflected on the elevation submitted with this application as shown on the concept plan. And we do have a short PowerPoint. This is a D I S view. You can see, um, once you turn off the three sixty onto Kennington Parkway South, it's located on the left side, almost across from the pool and the clubhouse. Um, and in that area, the red is the B two and everything else is R one. It does show white, but it is an R one zoning. That's just one of the flats of it. And this is showing the area that they are proposing. And this is a little more detailed. You can see the commercial area is still on three sixty. That's everything in the purple. The white green is where the thirty-one carriage homes are to be located. And there is a well lot that's right in front of it. There are conditions that staff recommends that all road improvements be in accordance with the Virginia Department of Transportation Design and Safety Standards. Approved buffers be provided between the B two and the R one zoning districts, and a six-foot fence, approved fence be required around the well lot. And we do have staff from Kennington Place LLC, Mr. Rogers, here to answer questions as well, but I'll be glad to answer any that I can. They're going to be similar to what's currently in there.
Would remember, has any questions for Ms. Graham?
Actually, I have a couple shared, Ms. Graham, I'm sorry. So the, the light green where the proposed homes are going and they're going up against the commercial area out there on three sixty. And that's B two zoning?
Everything in the purple is B two.
Okay. And the buffer between, do we know what that's going to be? How much of the commercial will be buffered along with what's in the green?
They will have to submit a landscape plan to be reviewed.
I guess what, what I'm getting at here is just to make sure, we're kind of doing this a little bit in reverse from a previous case where the folks were looking to put resident, put up against residential properties over in Central Crossing, and we ran into a few concerns there, but this looks like it's pretty well buffered between the commercial and the patio homes. Is that correct?
And what they've done in the past, and I'll have to let Mr. Rogers speak on this, is they've done a combination of fencing and vegetation. And of course, they will have, that when the commercial comes in, they're going to have that buffer in the front as well.
So that, I rode by and took a look at this lot. That lot currently is pretty much a totally wooded lot. So the, the buffer between the commercial and the patio homes, will that remain the natural buffer that's already there?
Usually they keep around the twenty-five foot buffer between the two. So they may incorporate, uh, that keep part of the natural buffer. They may put some fencing up.
And what are the, for the patio homes, what are the, I think the commercial carries a zero lot line. What is the lot line for the residential off of the commercial?
Because it is R one against the B two, there will be, they'll have to maintain a forty foot setback.
So that, with that being the way it is heavily wooded, that's going to leave a pretty good buffer between the two.
Okay.
Ms. Graham? About how mu- how many linear feet would you say it is from three sixty to the, to the back left property line, or I guess not, not property line, but dividing line there between the two portions?
This is not giving it to me, um. I know we have four hundred sixteen point four feet for the area to be rezoned in the light green that's on Kennington Parkway South. So just kind of using that as a scale, they've got quite a bit before they get out to, to three sixty.
Did I have it made? Yes. Um, I'm going to hand out to you all some comments. So it's down, Barbara, would you pass these out to the staff and to the department?
I hope to make this short and sweet, but, um, in my review of the application, and the ordinance, I found some real issues that have, have an impact on the approval or disapproval of this project. The applicant, Kennington Place LLC, is requesting to rezone nine point nine acres of a twenty point eighty-nine acre parcel currently zoned B two to R one, the twenty point eight-nine acre parcel front zone, Kennington Parkway, South and U S three sixty. The request for a CUP to allow for the construction of thirty-one age-restricted attached townhouses. The remaining ten point nine acres, which front zone route three sixty, would remain B two. The applicant's second requested action is for the Planning Commission to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors for their request to proceed with the approval of the conditional use permit, CUP two oh, two, two thousand and twenty-three, to allow them to proceed with the development of the nine point nine acre parcel for the construction of thirty-one age-restricted carriage homes since the zoning of the nine point nine acre parcel from B two to R one is approved. The applicant submitted to the, submitted the application for a conditional use permit on a form dated effective twelve, two thousand and nineteen, which predated the current ordinance and had references to the pre-two thousand twenty-one approved zoning ordinance. This submission should have been based on the adopted September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one ordinance, section eighty-six dash forty-four, conditional uses, which requires in accordance with section eighty-six dash forty-four, three, A, a preliminary site plan in accordance with Article seventeen of this ordinance. That section of the ordinance of the current ordinance requires submission of the preliminary site plan to be prepared to a scale of one inch equals fifty feet. And under section eighty-six dash four oh, two point three, plans requiring actions of the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors are the application for conditional use permits. The plans submitted by the applicant for a conditional use permit are woefully inadequate in that they do, do not provide the information required by Articles seventeen, site plan requirements. Without the information required under Article seventeen, neither the staff, Planning Commission, nor the Board of Supervisors has the necessary information to review and approve the applicant's request for a conditional use permit. It is my recommendation that the Planning Commission either table this request until such time as the applicant provides the necessary information required for review or reject the application. That parcel, when you look at the, what is the, uh, road coming into the Windenberg pla- Windenberg place, I think. Uh, Yan's in a cul-de-sac right now. It appears that the plan is to extend Windenberg Place through that, uh, through the area there, which, when I looked at it the other day, appears to have had a stormwater management basin, which appears to be in poor condition right now. Just after you cross that property line, you're into a lot of, um, of wetlands areas, and that property goes through those areas. This, uh, without the required information as required for a site plan, neither we nor the, uh, nor in our opinion, any staff or the, uh, public have any clue what the issues would be with this property. So for that reason, uh, unless you've got some clarification on this, for that reason, I would recommend either denial or table this proposal.
We do have a two-scale plat, but it was reduced when we had these put in your packets.
Was it a one inch to fifty feet?
I'll have to look and see.
Doesn't have any details on it. This, but what, what you have in the packet doesn't provide any details.
It has some. Uh, it doesn't have any stormwater or anything on it.
And all that is required in a preliminary site plan.
Anyone else?
Commission would like to discuss that.
This is public hearing, so we have to hear what everybody says, and then I guess we can discuss. Does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Graham right now, or?
And we do have Mr. Rogers here as well.
Does he wish to speak or say anything? Would you like to, maybe you can, since this was just thrown on us, I don't know if you have answers to that right now, but if you have some.
Chair, do you have the plan readily available where you could check the scale? I mean, that would answer one question.
He's going to come up and, yeah, you have a presentation.
Chairman, my name is Todd Rogers, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Kennington Place LLC. The, um, the applications that we use were pulled off the website, and we just checked the website, and they're the same December two thousand nineteen applications. So that's what we went by. As far as the different applications and the dates, that's what we submitted because that was what was available to us. The site plan that we have submitted here that has been here, I know, meets the general site plan requirements that we use for rezonings and showing those, and then we proper that site plan. So then when we come in with the detailed site plan, and I understand what you're saying, sir, as far as the new application, but we just didn't, we didn't have that information. So, um, but anyway, the, the site plan, if you would mind going back to just the site plan of this particular, this is the overall master plan, but you could go backwards a little bit. There you go, that one there. So that's the plan actually, and, um, and of course, you have the larger copy of that. This is scaled down. But on the left side, it has all the, the nomenclature that is required on the site plan from the standpoint of the ownership and the different, um, I'm sorry, there you go. So on the left-hand side, all the writing there has all the different requirements of the site plan, and then the, obviously showing the dimensions and showing the road network and how it ties in are all part of what we were required to submit. So that's what we had available to us. Um, so, I'm sorry that you feel like it doesn't meet the requirements, but we feel like it does based on the information that we were given to file the approval.
Section eighty-six forty-four, conditional uses, page fifty-eight, require site plan procedures, um, under three eight, which is on page fifty-nine. And that requires a site plan in, in accordance with Article seventeen. Article seventeen is on page one oh four that provides the site plan requirements, which are very detailed. I don't see any of the information required under that article, under Article seventeen in the site plan that you have submitted. That is, rather than a site plan, that is a conceptual plan.
Correct, and typically, and again, this, typically a site plan gets submitted before your full-blown site plan gets done. When we do the drainage calculations, we do all of that stuff when we do full-blown site plan, and that's for a construction plan approval, and in that process.
Well, that's the construction plan approval. Yes, I understand that, but.
But the site plan, the site plan is a construction plan. That's what that is.
What we're being asked to, to do is provide approval of your request for conditional use. I don't see how we, as a planning commission, can approve that without the detailed information that is provided in a preliminary site plan. The preliminary site plan is what we should be approving as a planning commission.
And is that, is this?
Once, once we have the preliminary site plan, then you, once that's approved, then you move ahead to do the final site plan.
Okay. And, and again, I'm reading this for the first time, so I'm making sure I understand. You're saying that there was a, a new ordinance adopted in September twenty-seventh that required the site plan? Is that what you're saying?
The, the ordinance adopted in two thousand and twenty-one.
Yeah, what's on your website is the September, I'm sorry, December two thousand nineteen conditional use permits, and that's what we filed based on what the information we had.
What's, what's in the ordinance is what you should be going by. Unfortunately, this, um, uh, site plan application was not updated, but.
How is the public to know?
You're still required to go, as, as a consultant, you should be required to, to know what the ordinance says and go by the ordinance.
Oh, Ms. Graham, were you satisfied with what they provided as what he's saying?
They provided a conceptual plan. Actually, all of this had been approved back in oh eight, I believe. It was approved for a commercial site. Um, so they're only taking ten acres to rezone it for, um, the, the carriage homes, the thirty-one carriage homes. They will have to resubmit for stormwater E and S. And of, of course, a preliminary and final site plan. What we have here is a conceptual for what they're wanting to do.
Right, and it does say one inch equals one hundred scale on the plan, so that scale is correct, but.
He's got a one to one hundred, and then another one that's a one to one fifty.
And does that have the details required under, under the site plan, preliminary site plan?
Just for the conceptual plan.
We're being asked to approve a conceptual plan. And then what is our next, what is the planning commission's next involvement?
Well, this will also require approval of a CUP, so there are conditions that you could put on that CUP approval.
We are being asked, as I understand it, as I read this, we're being asked to approve the CUP tonight.
If you.
That's what the public hearing is all about.
If you approve the rezoning, yes.
Well, we would have to approve the rezoning first, and then once the rezoning is approved, we would have to approve the CUP, but we're being asked to approve the CUP this evening.
You would have to recommend, you would have to recommend approval of the rezoning before you could go to recommend approval of a conditional use permit.
Are we being asked to approve the, uh, CUP this evening?
If you recommend approval of the rezoning. If you do not recommend approval of the rezoning.
Go to the next one.
You can't get the next one.
And like you said, we did this before. We had issues that we didn't understand the process, and we didn't issue the extra. So this time, we should, if we want those extra things, put it in this as conditions so that maybe we won't get caught again like we did last time and not have all that information. So if we want all that specific stuff, we just have to put conditions that specifically state what you just said. And if, if the zoning passes, that has to be done first.
Yeah.
I mean, it's okay with you.
I think we could possibly do that. We would have to be very clear. If they're going to have to, um, the condition would be to follow the, um, requirements of.
Of the ordinance.
Of the site plan.
Right. But I can understand where the applicant's coming from. If they don't see the stuff on the website, they can't be held accountable. They don't, they can't read our minds.
I, I, I would disagree with that because I think that certainly has the, has a responsibility for going by the ordinance and the ordinance.
Going over what's on the website is stated to come up with what's really, yeah, that's, that doesn't make sense.
Chairman, just not, just not in here, but I, I feel like the applicant has every reason to believe that what he sees on the official county website is.
Should be correct and updated.
Uh, consistent with what the ordinance, the current ordinance is, and if it's not, I think we do need, I think we do need to take that into consideration. Being that they have done the, the legwork already for this, for this application hearing. I think that we, we need to take that into consideration and also understand, I think that's, putting conditions into anything that we approve would be very important at that point so that we can address concerns that Mr. Wagner has as well. But since we, since we have to approve the zoning change first, I'd say we focus on that.
Let's see where.
And then, and then see where it goes from there.
And I'd like, if we could get the applicant a copy of Mr. Graham, Mr. Wagner.
I've got one.
You gave him one?
Yeah.
So that we all know as well.
Yeah.
I said maybe you can get with Ms. Graham to get the updated specific ordinances as well, but.
Yeah, and, and just to, again, further, if we are successful in getting the approval for the rezoning as that first step, the second step, as a condition of getting the, the CUP approved, we would certainly agree to adhere by all ordinances right for that are required of that site plan.
Come up with all the, like you said, the right scale, all the conditions that Mr. Wagner said, yes.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Everyone is agreeable. So I guess we're still, haven't had the public hearing yet, and he's spoken. Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant?
We've had public, you got?
No, we haven't.
Public hearing cover both.
No, I think it's, it's separate, right?
They're separate, but we kind of, it's the same information for both.
We need to do each one separately. We haven't had the public hearing. I opened it inadvertently too fast and before Ms. Graham got to speak. So now we will have the people speak, and then we can discuss again and then decide on each one individually. Zoning first, and if that passes, then we'll go on. Okay. So any other questions for staff or the applicant from our board? Okay, so now we opened it inadvertently a little early, so the public hearing is open. So if anyone from the audience wishes to speak, you have three minutes. State your name and your address, please, and come to the podium. If we don't have, do we have anybody online that was waiting, or?
Not with sign up.
Not with sign up message.
Any of the people in the audience wish to speak or none of the people?
Well, the applicants did hold two community meetings to try to inform the residents and the Kennington subdivision.
Did you get any responses back, negative or positive that needs to?
I believe there were one or two people that called or came in with some questions, but nobody that spoke in opposition.
Okay.
That, that's kind of where I was going with it earlier, that the last case that, that I spoke about previously.
Right. And.
Those.
Worked right.
Didn't quite work right, but the, these folks here who would go into the carriage homes know what to expect adjacent to them. There shouldn't be a shock there. And again, they held two town hall meetings. That was a, a great opportunity for anyone who had any discussion to come forward.
And it is unfortunate that our website is not up to date, but from Mr. Wagner said, to our current ordinances, but they are aware that they are changed and we have given them the specifics that we're looking for. And I would, if this passes in zoning, to state that exactly, because we didn't do anything last time. So then like, so we were kind of caught. This way we can come up with exactly what we need. They have to prove to us that they have that and then we decide.
And, and I don't disagree with Mr. Wagner. The last time we, we did kind of get caught.
Right.
And but by definition, it's a CUP. It's conditional use permit. This is their opportunity to put conditions on it.
Exactly.
The things he spoke of and I, I can see that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I do have a.
No, you gotta close it. Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. You might.
I shouldn't want to close it.
I do have one question for the applicant as it regard, as, as it pertains to the the zoning change. I know that there, it leaves, looks like ten point nine acres from that parcel that'll be still in B two, correct?
Correct. Excuse me. Correct.
Do, in your crystal ball, do you see a timeline or anything that would, where you perceive possibly a build out of that parcel?
Obviously, the sooner the better. I know that the, the more rooftops where you have there encourages more commercial development down there. So I know that for a fact, but the the target market that we're looking at right now is a lot more medical type uses is what we're looking at, especially if we're successful here. This adds another thirty-one carriage homes, which gets us about a hundred and ten. So plus or minus in that part of the community. And then we have some other fifty-five and older homes that we're going to be building over near McCauley. My point being is that the medical need will become more prevalent as we continue to build out, but we think that would be the best for that site for right now. But the market conditions change and that sort of stuff. But B two uses, the nice thing with King Way's ordinances, it does have a pretty good sized playbook, meaning there's a lot of different uses that could go on there, which really makes it advantageous for us to be able to market that property. So, and as you know, we just took the library site out of Kennington and now it's over in McCauley Park. And so that gives us another three acres right there in Kennington that we can combine to hopefully have more of a planned development with more commercial. So, but our current target is medical is what we're targeting as far as marketing out there.
But no timeline or anything like that?
I, I can't, I mean, you know, I don't have a, I don't have that crystal ball. I wish I did. I just don't have the crystal ball. Yeah.
Any other questions on?
Just one more comment. Number one, no more storage units, please.
Excuse me?
No more storage units, please.
Yeah, well.
Uh, the, the other thing is, one of the things that we're looking for, the medical market is, is good. We are looking for that. Drugstore, but mostly looking at, we should be looking at neighborhood commercial to provide businesses that meet the needs of the neighborhood, basically, as well as, as well as their traffic.
Right. Okay. Well, and that's obviously all of the above. We think that, you know, who knows what the fallout of the of COVID is going to be as far as more people working from home and things like that. We know the office market is very soft right now. So we know, we don't think that's coming back anytime soon. But we do think that services and, you know, chiropractors, physical therapists and other medical uses, I think, are things that we're trying to target on, you know, so.
All right. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And then we have discussion, you know, starting members. Any other discussions?
So I have a question for Mrs. Graham. I think it's something that Mr. Wagner touched on when, when he was going through some of his information. The, the planned drive crosses over wetlands and looks like it's being extended into the existing portion of Kennington. Is that a concern for you with the drive through the wetlands?
They're not going to be able to encroach into the wetland area either with the drive or any other type of structure.
So how is that going to impact the plan you have before?
Will y'all plan to move out and go all the way through?
That's, that's great to hear. It's great to talk to others. And get, get permanent, the wetland, the permit that we've already charged, pay for.
There's a couple of things they can do. They can go through a joint permit process. To do that, they could do wetland credits. But they would have to go through all of that process and it would have to be approved.
Any other discussion?
Rogers has.
Yes, sir.
I'm sort of sorry.
That's okay. We need to get all that information again.
That there is a skinny wetland that comes in right there. It's about, where we're crossing it is about sixty feet wide from, and that's the total wetland. And it's real narrow right through there. So we will do a road cross. It's not unusual to do road crossings across wetlands. You obviously can't build houses in them, but you can put infrastructure, roads, water, sewer lines, that sort of thing. But to get a permit from that. And it's under a jurisdictional permit, which basically we have to file an application through the Corps of Engineers, which obviously the county would get approval letters for all that before we're able to construct that. But we specifically put the road in that location because A, it did interconnect into the rest of the community, which is good for traffic flow and actually good for pedestrian access and walking. But also it was the narrowest point to cross that wetland and that's why we did it at that specific location.
So you'd have to follow the rules, whatever they come up with. Maybe it was a bridge or something, small piers or something to get through that area. That would be the only thing that, but you would have to follow all the, would, we need to do a conditional use for that or would they?
They would go through a joint permit process.
Yeah.
Through the Corps via MRC.
And if they didn't meet it, then they wouldn't be able to do it.
And normally when they do that, they have to put in culverts that are large enough that would not obstruct the flow of the water. Sometimes they have to do where they buy a wetland credits. So there, there's a number of things that would, that they could do, but it would all go through mainly the four.
They just can't do it. It would have to be things that would be passed and it's not, we don't have to worry about, right? So it's not like they're just gonna put a pave through the wetlands.
Yeah, that's correct.
Mr. Rogers, are we sure that these are wetlands? I know sometimes the maps indicate wetlands, but when you actually delineate, you find out the maps were incorrect. So these have.
These have been fully delineated and approved. The delineation was approved years ago and then reconfirmed about three years ago.
Okay. And I just, Mr. Chairman, I did actually, I walked in there and, and with Mr. Rogers saying corrected, it's basically a, a depression there and it, it doesn't go anywhere. It stops. It's not a continuing thing. It's, it's actually the bottom, the bottom line of the drainage ditch that comes off of the property on Venter Road and travels onto this property. And by the time it gets onto this property, it, it pretty much gives out right there. It doesn't continue, as you can see, to go across Kennington Parkway. I just want, it, it's not like we're dealing with a, a flowing body of water or a stream or anything like that. It's, it's the bottom of a drainage ditch.
Correct. That's basically what it was.
Any other questions or discussions?
So just to follow up on that, or whoever can answer. When you go to the Corps of Engineers, it, do, do you usually get approval for these type of things that there's not a?
There's, very rarely you don't, especially for road crossing, for road crossing. And so not to get into the weeds here, but road crossings are considered a public safety because, and again, the same reason, because we interconnect roads for vehicle traffic, but also pedestrian traffic and we show the sidewalks and that sort of thing going through there. So the Corps of Engineers or a narrow strip would say, okay, you can disturb the wetlands and you got guidelines with culverts and what have you got to do through there. But they'll do it. And one of the reasons is public safety.
And so, sorry that I keep asking questions, but for the width of this crossing, have we, I, I don't know that we entertain as far as the fire department and, and the width through this development to make sure that their equipment can pass through without any concerns?
All, all of those, the fire department, the pavement width is what the fire department looks at and all of that has to be, that is what will permit, get approved by the Corps is to make sure that the pavement width is adequate for fire rescue and so forth.
Can I, because I can see that that would make sense to make that connection if we do this approval, especially from a concern for safety, et cetera. So I, I just wanted to make sure that if, if we, you know, were to approve these, that your overall plan wouldn't have to change if you didn't get approval for that crossing. So that, that's why I was asking that question. I didn't want to see all that change. For some reason, we thought that wouldn't get approval.
Right. I understand.
Thank you. That, that's all that I have related to that.
Yes, one, one question, piggyback off of that, if I could. You said the, the permit is just for the road. Is it for utilities as well or, you know, I'm, I'm expecting you all to probably look to tie in with the water and sewer.
Yeah, the, the water, the water and sewer, the sewer is actually right there already. So the sewer has already been permitted right there because it's already in the well and but the water line will come across and tie back into Kennington Parkway. So you have a looping system there and that helps your pressures and keeps everything flowing nice. But permits would be all inclusive for those types.
This is also something that DEQ would look at.
Correct. And they have to pass that, meet all the requirements.
That, that's why when, when something gets rezoned, it seems like it takes a long time till you can actually construct something. There's a lot of approval processes you got to go through.
So we're discussing, do we want to separate? We are going to separate, but if we want any more discussion on the actual zoning portion, do we want to move ahead?
I would recommend that approval of the rezoning. Unless somebody has other conditions that you want to put on.
Not for the rezoning part. Does anybody else?
I would second that.
Okay, have a motion, but no other conditions to just pass the zoning. Any discussion? So we have a roll call?
Mr. Slitter?
Hi.
Mr. Callan?
Hi.
Ms. Height?
Hi.
Mr. Wagner?
Hi.
Chairman Greenwood?
Hi. So the zoning portion passes. And let's move on to the CUP. Do we want to go ahead and add conditions to that, table it, or since we know we want certain things from Mr. Wagner's list, do we want to pass it and label specific conditions now or is everyone want to table?
Would it be appropriate if I ask one more question?
Sure, yeah.
Um, this isn't related to a relationship to the age restriction. The way it read, it said that it was intended for to be occupied by persons fifty-five years or older. I, I know that there's in some other developments in other counties, they wanted, they follow very strict guidelines that they don't allow anyone under fifty-five. I'm just wondering the way this is worded, what the intent was. And if there are any provisions for otherwise, the question came up from somebody that I talked to about this. What if the, the, the person who owns the property is fifty-five or older, but they, their spouse is younger than that, would that be of any concern?
And this is in their proffers and they do follow all of their housing laws regarding age restriction.
So I guess that means that no one under fifty-five would be allowed.
No one under fifty-five is supposed to be allowed.
Who would, Ms. Graham, who would monitor that?
The homeowners association and because it is in the proffers, all of that's also attached to their deed. I don't know if Mr. Proffers wants to emphasize a little bit more on that. I know they have multiple age restricted units now that they, they do, or you have a company that monitors this for the association.
Yes, there's required with each contract in order to get a homeowner's disclosure package, you have to provide driver's license, some other form of ID on the age of the potential buyers and therefore future applicants. I just want to clarify one thing. The code of Virginia, that's why it says intended. It is, it's going to be fifty-five and older per the code of Virginia. The code of Virginia basically says at least one person is to be fifty-five or older and, and has to be the primary person. It can't be just a, you know, but, and, but in no event, anyone under the age of nineteen can be in there. So the whole intention is that part of it is those school age children. So someone could have a, you know, one spouse fifty-five and one fifty, and that's still allowed. Okay. So the questions come up before, so maybe anticipate a question. What happens if something unfortunate happens to the fifty-five-year-old and then the fifty-year-old is there still in there and they were a married couple? Then the, the law allows for the homeowners association to make an exception for that until they get to fifty-five. So, but in no event, anyone under the age of nineteen can live there permanently, but they can visit. So we call them grandchildren visits, but that's. So I just wanted to clarify the way the code is written and that's why we specify the code of Virginia and the proper.
Perfect. Thank you. And thank you for expanding on that as well.
Ms. Graham, to your knowledge, have we had any issues? Because like I said, we've had the fifty-five and older community here for many years now. Are you aware of any issues or homeowner complaints or?
Not with age restriction. I haven't.
Mr. Wagner, do you have a, make a bulleted items of things we want to.
I don't have bulleted items, but I think I can come up with them.
Okay, right.
I would recommend approval of this, of the conditional use permit with two conditions. The first condition being that they must submit a site plan in accordance with article seventeen as required by section eighty-six dash forty-four. And that the once the site plans have been submitted to staff, then the planning commission would hold a public hearing on those preliminary site plans for approval.
They're vague.
Can I ask the question? Is, are those in addition to the staff recommended conditions already?
Yes, yes.
Everyone agreeable with those? And Cherry, there shouldn't be a problem with us doing that. Should, I mean, having another public hearing. As long as we said it in the conditions, we should be able to do it.
I don't think so. I can double check with Max, but if it's a condition, I think we should.
Right. Yeah. And did you read the conditions earlier? I guess you did. We don't need to go over those again. As long as everybody knows them. Do you want to make a?
I'll make a motion.
I can't submit these extra two, okay? These extra two, okay. Okay, we have a motion made with the uh conditions that Ms. Graham had plus the two extra conditions that Mr. Wagner has. Uh, do we have a second?
I've got a question.
Oh, sure.
If uh for some reason. One of the permits, say for the wetlands crossing. Uh, if something were to come up where. This conceptual plan would have to be changed. Do, does it go back to square one? Do we have to submit a whole new? Plan at that point or how does?
The preliminary site plan should take care of that. So if something came up, it would just be in the normal. Uh, requirements for the um. Preliminary site plan.
Like I said, they would probably know that before they come up with this real site plan. They they're sure they would know whether it's been passed or not before they're gonna spend the money on a formal site plan. They would know if they were gonna be able to do that and if they for some, like I said, he doesn't see anything happen that had happened in the past, but if they say it did. They would probably just either put a loop or dead end and come up with a formal site plan for us to all review again. And then we could decide at that time. Anything else? No other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and it's been properly seconded.
Who seconded the motion?
Oh.
I'll second, I'll second.
Wait, oh, I hope, okay.
No, I I hadn't. Yeah, but I'll second.
But he will say, okay, now we have a motion made and properly seconded. Uh, could we have a roll call?
Mr. Callum.
Aye.
Ms. Height.
Aye.
Mr. Wagner.
Aye.
Mr. Sluter.
Aye.
Chairman Greenwood.
Aye. CUP passes with those conditions, so if you could. Well, next item we have on the agenda is unfinished business, Ms. Graham. Do we have any unfinished?
Oh. The only thing that may be unfinished is July um eleven. We have central apartments that is supposed to come back before the planning commission. Um, they may be requesting um that that be extended. I was hoping to have an answer from them before tonight's meeting, but uh I do not. But that is a possibility. Um, and then the only other thing, like maybe I should put that into a work session matters. Our joint work session with the uh border supervisor is scheduled for August twenty-first.
Does anyone else have any questions for unfinished business? I had a question about maybe some of the items that we've had. Supposedly have already been passed, like the Starbucks, the the uh donut place, Wawa. I see they have a lot of bore holes. They're doing a lot of stuff. How far has that come along? Are they turned in anything? Are they waiting? Is there problems?
They have not turned in anything yet. Um, I know that uh Wawa has been doing some site work. Starbucks, they're finalizing everything. Um, I did expect them to turn something in last week, but we did not get it.
And the donut place or?
Nothing yet.
Nothing yet at all, okay.
We've gotten some information to them that they're working on the site right now and I think that's taken a little bit of. Time, but hopefully we'll see that before too long.
Anyone else have any questions for unfinished? No? Okay, then we'll move on to new business, Ms. Graham again.
Um, the only thing new also at your July eleventh meeting. Um, we are gonna have um another CUP request. For our Old Newcastle uh sand and gravel. Uh, this was actually at a location where there was a sand and gravel pit at one time. Uh, and they're coming back to to open it back up and it's gonna be. A hundred and forty-eight point eleven acres of about a four hundred and forty-eight acre site. And then the only other public hearing coming up at this time. Is we have a variance coming uh before the boarding zoning appeals at their July nineteenth meeting. Um, that is for a thirty-six by seventy um. Pole barn and a front yard. And after the fact.
That's the one that's already built on Brandywine? So that that's going for variance.
That's going for.
So that that actually won't come before us at all.
On the nineteenth. So do we have any other questions about new business? We're going to staff and our special committee reports.
Good evening.
Evening.
You have before you the admin's reports for the month of May, so you will notice that. We actually increased our permit activity in the month of May. We issued fifty-one. Um, zoning and lane disturbance permits compared to the month of April, which were thirty-seven. And I think I was mentioning to Ms. Height that and we picking back up um within the past couple of days. I've received nine permits in the last twenty-four hours or so. Um, six of them are new single families dwellings, which is a little bit unusual for the last couple of months. Um, so we're picking slightly back up. And you have all the rest of the normal reports in here. The um property maintenance ru- report. The Andy's inspections that he's performed for the month of May, the zoning log that kind of details of permit activity. And the planning information as far as the survey, boundary surveys. Family divisions and things that we looked at in the month of May, that kind of backed off for the month. And so that's the one thing that we did back off for. For that particular month, but again, we did pick up on the permit activities. So I'll stand by if you have any questions or if you look at it. And throughout the month and you have any questions, you can always give me a call.
Anybody see anything right off the bat? I know we probably have a time to look at it. Any questions?
Have any questions at this time? Have to go through it pretty thoroughly.
Oh, yeah, a lot of detail here. Okay, thank you very much. Next item we have is work session matters.
Okay, like I said, we do have the joint work session uh scheduled for August twenty-first. Uh, we did put um in front of you tonight some of the proposed subdivision and zoning ordinance changes. Um, and this is something that we have talked about. Uh, we tried to get them all in here. Uh, to give y'all a chance to take a look at them and make any uh changes or additions or um deletions. And also in this is the matrix. Um, we have the I one, I two and I three, but with that, um. We didn't specify what each uh use. Of category would be permitted in I want, I two or I three. So that's something that we need to look at. Uh, also, um. Another thing was the uh matrix of committed uses for special events. And that's something that we need to look at as well. Um, in that anything that was changed is in red. Um, anything that we haven't talked about that. Uh, I felt needed to be changed. I put an asterisk over on the far right. There's only like two or three of those. But that is something that we also um need to look at to to make sure that we want those uses in each one of the uh zoning districts.
What page is that on? Just if you have it.
It is the last five or six pages at the very end.
I see that's a matrix. Does that have the asterisk you're talking? Oh, I see.
Yeah, there's only a couple of them.
Right, I see. Okay, thanks.
That's one on page ninety-eight.
Right.
One oh one.
Yeah. Mine is black, so I guess that's already in there.
It's already in there. Um, we did under the short-term business rental. What we had talked about, um, taking it as a permitted by writing the AC to a CUP. So we did make that change in there as well.
Do you guys have any questions now? I know we just got it, but. Do you have a certain date you'd like to have maybe?
Um, I'm hoping that we can kind of go over everything at our next meeting. Um, I'd like to get it to the board so that they have a chance to review it before. On August.
August, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I actually have a couple of questions. Is this okay?
Sure.
The uh, under architectural development and signage standards on that page. You've got uh not less than sixteen percent of the total area of any facade visible from a public right-of-way. Excluding work areas shall consist of windows and doors. Now, I don't, I don't recall that ever being discussed since I've been on the planning commission. Is that something?
Um, this is something we looked at, I believe it was New Kent.
Okay.
Um, especially with the exterior. Um, so that was taken out of. Um, something that they had in their ordinance to include. But if it's something that you want to take back out, we can.
I just, I guess I would ask my fellow members, do any of y'all recall us having a discussion about that?
We had a lot of discussion, but I'm not sure specifically. Um, now, this has come out of the New Kent ordinance.
You can.
Yeah, I know we had looked at the New Kent ordinance concerning exterior material. We looked at that pretty heavily. I believe Mr. Sluter had printed off some information from New Kent. And then the second thing, and again, these are just questions. The large work area doors are open bays. I know we had discussed that as well because. Dixon's was built with the open bays facing the public right-of-way. Did did we ever decide? That that was not gonna be allowed? I I recall that we had talked about it.
The way I remember us having a discussion, I just can't remember if we actually decided on anything with it, but. Obviously Dixon's, which we've all agreed is a is a attractive building.
Right.
Um, would not be allowed under this ordinance.
This from New Kent also?
My, a lot of this is, um, I did make a few changes on the exterior. Um, Mr. Callum had called me and give had given me the um actual wording for the. The metal that we're looking for. Um, so I added that in there.
I I recall us having the conversation about Dixon's that. That piece of property actually would not have been suitable for them to put the doors anywhere but on the front.
They would not have been able to put it anywhere else.
Right, and I and I think we all agreed that 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 was a a very attractive building. I actually remember talking about it at Christmas time, how it was lit up and. That the gateway to the county was pretty, pretty well done. So I, I mean, I think we should at least have a little discussion about that.
Maybe we can go ahead and do that now and that way we'll know whether to take it out or that way she can correct it.
We can. Is that something?
What does everybody feel? Leave those two out since it came straight from New.
Has Dixon met the landscape requirement to be part of the property?
They did. They met all the TCO requirements that we required on the project.
The um, kind of skipping from these, but kind of we can. Put it all together, talking about the TCO, I'm still a little unclear about the where the TCO is measured from. I know you addressed it in here, but it's still a little vague. Uh, maybe somebody can shed some light on that for me, but where? Where is the line that the TCO is being measured from?
Okay, um, Barbara, can you pull that PowerPoint up that has the uh?
Cause I know we had talked about the de-acceleration lanes.
So it's still vague. What page is that?
So I did. It was the one that had the um, the pictures of the road.
It's on the back of the first page under the uh section eighty-six dash one thirty-six point two, under boundaries.
So it might have been taken out from the drive.
Yeah, I thought we said that we were gonna add not including turn lanes or something like that.
Yeah, that's what we had discussed before.
Maybe we need to just add that or is there, that's what I.
I guess what I'm, it says the center line shall be measured from the yellow line dividing the two-lane roads. So that would be the the two lanes. Whatever side you were on, but then it says and marking the left edge of the divided highways. That's a little unclear to me.
Right.
Barbara can find that. I did uh pull up the GIS aerials that show that. Um. So what, when you see the pictures, it makes it a little more clear.
Yeah, cause I thought we said something about the center line of the median.
We just.
Yeah.
As Mr. Wagner said, we talked about.
A lot, right.
I don't know that we ever. Fully came to a misunderstanding. I don't think anybody was disagreeing. It was just a good understanding.
Yeah, so that the solid yellow line is always gonna be on the left side and I know we were talking about the. The turn lanes. Well, that would be the same thing. You would not include the. The turn lane, but it would be the the solid solid language, the solid line before you get to the median. And she may not be able to pull it up tonight.
So how does that relate to this statement then, the center line? Is it gonna be measured from the solid line on the left or is it gonna be measured from the center of the two lanes?
It would be measured from the solid yellow line on the left.
So this says the center line shall be measured from the yellow line dividing the two-lane roads. So what is, what is that trying to tell us?
Yeah, that's, I'm hoping she can get that pulled up. And if it's unclear that we need to work on the wording a little bit more. Um, but it would be the solid yellow line before the median. On each side.
What, what is the distance from that line?
Uh, from three sixty, it's seven hundred and fifty.
Is it seven hundred and fifty?
It's five hundred on thirty.
Yeah, from that.
From the solid yellow.
Okay. So the center, the median is a, is another twenty feet. So. From the. Center of the right-of-way. Or the right-of-way line. Uh, just, just whatever it is, it needs to be very specific.
Yeah.
Where it's to be measured from.
Maybe it should say the center line shall be measured from the yellow lines dividing the two-lane roads. That way it would be the yellow line on the right. The yellow line on the left, the center of that would be the perfect mid-middle.
So why wouldn't we just say seven hundred and fifty feet from the center line of the two lanes? Like she said and leave that other part out of there. And and I think thirty, and correct me if I'm wrong, we said we were gonna use the center line. Of thirty because it's only two lanes and it's variable width. And.
We did say that. I found my notes. We had, I put somewhere in our package, we had the B dot verbiage is what you gave us. And we asked you to revisit it, not to include the turn lanes. So it said, center of, and you're gonna have to forgive me, there's one of these words I can't pronounce, say. Center line of the highway means a line. I'm sorry, I can't pronounce that. From the edges of the median separating the main travel ways of a divided highway. Or the center line of the main traveled way of a non-divided highway. So again, we ask you to revisit the verbiage, not to include the turn lanes, is that what that's that right?
So with the pictures, and I don't know, we'll get them pulled up today. So the center line would be the yellow line down the center of thirty or the left side of three sixty. Before you get into the median section.
And the, to to kind of tie all this together, talking about the the center line and the variable widths. I actually ran into a situation that I talked to Sherri about if you, and I'll give you specifics, Cummins Road, which is a secondary road. That road from Upshaw to Venter. Changes three times from forty to forty-five to fifty. Variable width through there. So.
That, that have nothing to do with this, because we're talking about. I'm not talking about the secondary road.
But what I, I'm, I'm just trying to tie it. I think the reason we. But what I, I'm, I'm just trying to tie it. I think the reason we said the center line of thirty is because that too has variable widths.
It does have.
So it would change. That's why we chose the center line. And I'm actually proposing that at some point in time in the future, we need to look at the secondary because of the variable widths.
But secondary would, unless we change the TCO to include some secondary, those secondaries would never be coming.
Yeah. I, I'm talking about setbacks. I'm just trying to correlate the two. Now, the TCO obviously does not apply to secondary roads.
Yeah, actually, what you're saying is setbacks for the.
Correct. But it's, it's part of the discussion we had about Route thirty, which does have to adhere to the TCO. Is the, the variable widths create. It's, it's just different. It can change as much as twenty feet. So you could have one property that, that could be twenty feet closer or further. And again, when you're dealing with five hundred feet on thirty and seven hundred and fifty feet on three sixty. I mean, I really don't think we even run into this a whole lot. Most everything that's built on three sixty is within the seven hundred and fifty feet. And has to adhere to the TCO. We could get to a situation one day where something could be built just outside of the TCO. But I even think, i- isn't there some language in there? If the property uh, fronts on three sixty or thirty. Even if that's seven hundred and fifty feet can be met, if it still fronts, that it has to adhere to the TCO?
If it's still fronted, it would still have to adhere to the.
So it's kind of a midpoint.
Well, we do have, we do have an issue. We do have an issue. What is it? Uh, what's the road that runs?
Sharon.
How well Sharon Road, we do have some issues there for the seven hundred and fifty goes beyond. And I think the original language said four to Sharon, but.
Mr. Chairman, could I interrupt for just one second? Instead of having our staff continue to look for the diagram, can we just have that part? We can readdress it next meeting. I don't want them to have to continue to try to find that tonight. Sorry for interrupting.
That's okay. That's fine.
We can email it to you also. Um, but if you feel we need to change that wording to clarify a little bit more.
Like I said, cause if we go by, what it says, the yellow line, it would be different if you measured it from the one side or the other. Cause then you're not including, if you're only going to this yellow line, you still have, like Mr. Wayne said, from the yellow line to the middle of the median. There's another maybe ten, twenty feet.
Yeah. And, and switching gears, moving on from that, and I agree with Ms. Height. The, the Sharon Road, ev- everything on Sharon Road is encompassed within the seven hundred and fifty feet. From one end to the other, the seven hundred and fifty comes from three sixty and crosses Sharon Road and goes to the other side.
And of course, uh, not everything, but the majority of Sharon is up a very steep hill.
That's true.
So, you know, depending on how you measure, if it's straight out or if you go up the hill, it could make a difference.
Well, do we want to like to discuss taking out C and D on page? Well, there's no page numbers.
But I, just a little bit of clarification on that. I, I think what you run into on Sharon Road is. The back of the property, if you access from Sharon Road, the back of the property may would have to be brick or. Another material as we specified, but the area fronting on Sharon Road would not have to be. So it's kind of, kind of a little thing that we probably need to.
Yeah, it's like you said, let's say the floors hadn't been built. It wasn't a resisting building. The back of the building would have to be brick. And nobody would see it because of all those trees, but the front could be crap from Sharon and it would look awful. Right? Do we need?
You got businesses on both sides of Sharon.
We have another issue coming up too with the cornerstone, which is on the corner of. Um, three sixty and.
Where the old post office?
Um, because they're on the corner of both. They're going to be in the TCO with whatever they want to have on.
Right now, it's a total brick building, so now it would meet, but who knows?
And won't they have some setback issues there? I think that's right on the river.
It looks like, well, they're, they're far enough from that that they'll be okay.
It's closer to three sixty.
Oh, right.
But um, they're, they're going to be able to meet the setback one day.
And what are they proposing to build?
A storage building.
Besides those standalone portable units?
Um, it's a rented size storage uh, unit that was donated to them.
Cause they have those two that are flooded up. Is this going to be in front of that?
They're basically two sheds.
They're, they're working to get it in place there, so.
In addition to those two, or is this going to take?
This will be in addition to.
And, and technically they have to adhere to the TCO right there.
They do.
On the three sixty side, but also the TCO says that the sides as well as the front. Cause they're visible from three sixty, correct? So they basically have to do something we specified in here. On three sides and then the side facing the existing post, old post office could be.
Anything, right?
Yeah.
Or could it? Because that's visible from West River. So basically they're going to be asked for it to build a storage shed. It's going to have to be stucco, dry, it's brick, could be metal.
I'm not sure exactly what the material was going to be. I know it's, I believe it's a refrigerated storage unit. Um, the store refrigerated thing.
So currently in the county, the, the Sharon Road is really the only cut through road that we have that really is impacted by this. But I think we probably need to come up with some, some pretty solid language. Because I think you're going to see in the very near future, at least the three sixty side of Venner Road turn into that same situation. Behind the Twin Rivers Building and across the street on the Nookham property. That's going to fall within that seven hundred and fifty feet as well.
Do, we want to move forward, maybe taking at least these two C and D out or waiting to her to come up with new verbiage for the. Center line word and then, or just wait later to do all of it.
Since we've just gotten this revised um, information from Mrs. Raymond's staff. I, I'd like some more, for more time to review the information. Um, for our next meeting before I make any additional comments related to any of it. Since I haven't really had a.
Yeah, me either.
Lot of a chance to read through it. Um, I really appreciate the staff putting this together to give us that kind of timeframe before um, our joint meeting with the board. So if there are any different, any additional changes or corrections that we need made. We have one more opportunity to get that done before.
Then we can have a good copy to hand.
Right.
Okay.
There are a couple of things that we did not discuss that I put in there that's also in red. Um, one was to not allow um, solar facilities. And the transportation corridor overlay district. So I did put that in there. Um, another thing that has come up a few times, uh, with our family division where we've allowed them to do. Uh, family uh, lots that would be three acres instead of the required five acres. Uh, the question that's coming up about the parent parcels. Um, so I did put some language in there that the parent parcel shall be no less than five acres. We try to make that a little bit clearer. And that we did talk about the daycare facilities in the church. Um, so I did put some verbiage in there on that as well.
So a couple of points to what you just said. The, do we have any solar requests currently that would fall within the TCO?
We've had inquiries, but no actual request, but.
I wonder if that's why Hannah, why they have those two crappy houses that are still out there. Maybe they're saving that for business. And that's either solar farm is way back, but I would have thought they should take all that down, because that's been an eyesore for like twenty years. And they're getting worse. They're starting to collapse and they still have electricity hooked to them. I'm like. I don't, maybe we need to complain to Hannah, but. Okay. Guess we'll just.
And then the, the second thing, and I, I see that you put some clarification in here, and I think you and I actually had a discussion about this. People are under the impression if they had six acres, they could cut it into three acre lots.
Right.
And do a family division, but I don't think it was ever intended. I think it was, you need eight acres and then you can cut three acres off. But that was not in there, correct?
It wasn't. That's why um, we included it under here. Just trying to make it clear that they have to still maintain their, their parent parcel of five acres. So.
Does anyone have any questions at this time?
Um, in regards to that, we don't get ourselves in any trouble. That's in the AC zoning, the parent track has to remain five acres. Is, is that the only place they can do a family subdivision?
That is usually the only place that ever comes up. It, it's in the AC.
Came in, in the, in the RR, the, the medium density where it allows three acre lots.
Um, I don't think there's anything that forbids it. But that would be, that would be a change.
Because again, just for clarification, right, if, if you went in the RR district and you had six acres and you wanted to cut it into. Two, three acre lots, you would check the box of three acres for your family. And you would also check the box of meeting the minimum acreage for that zoning, correct?
So we could change the wording that the parent parcel shall be no less than the required lot size and. The, the district. That would take.
Are you saying that the current parcel must remain five acres?
If it's in the AC.
So it would have to be an eight acre parcel?
So what people are thinking, uh, and it's mostly AC when somebody comes in to do a family division. Say they have six acres, they can divide it into two parcels. Two, three acre parcels without keeping their minimum lot size of five acres on their parent parcel. But that wasn't the intention of the ordinance. Keep the five acre parcel, but to allow family members, you could break off three acres. So they would have to have a minimum of eight acres to divide it into, give it to one of their family members. Or they have a larger parcel, they could.
Which is what I think was the intended use, but it, it was not spelled out in there. So that's why we, we talked about it. I just. I think a lot of people thought you could cut six acres and I don't think that was ever the intended ordinance.
But just trying to clarify it.
So now the ordinance.
Next, we have commissioner comments. I can't remember where I started last time. I started with Ms. Height. I think I started with Ms.
I was pretty sure that's where we always start.
Oh, there we go. We can start this other.
It's no problem. Um.
Let me write down here. I'll start with you this down.
It's all, it's all good. Um, so first of all, thanks to everyone that's come out tonight yet again. Um, really appreciate y'all coming. Um, would still like to see and to those online would like to see more people. Uh, but we're glad that we still have our regulars that come. Um. Upcoming real soon before our next meeting, that's going to be fourth of July. So I hope everyone has a happy and safe fourth of July. Um, just some notes from, that came up during today's meeting. Um. I guess I'd like to make sure that staff um, ensures that the applications that are available on the website are the most up to date. Um, I have a question about, are, are we required or is the county required to accept applications? Um, that are not using the correct form. Um, and could that be a requirement?
Well, those are the forms that we, we have had. Uh, we have been working on all these forms and packets. To hopefully have available for use by July first. Um, we, we want to have a packet that's available, that kind of spells out everything. And not just a CUPR rezoning, but for anything that they're coming in to do. Like a, a family division or a single lot division or a minor. We, we want to be able to have everything with a checklist, um, just to make it a little bit easier for. An individual that doesn't deal with it on a daily basis.
So the form that they were talking, that we were talking about tonight is the most current one available. For use, even though it doesn't have all of the.
That, that was the, the rezoning and the BUP applications that are online. And it doesn't really have like a check sheet or, you know, the detail, which is what we're trying to, to do. Is to get all of that information out. Um, with it, you know, they can go down and say, I have da, 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 da. And it will have the code sections and so forth on it.
I, I hope, I would encourage that if there's a way that we can, once we have all of those forms um, updated, et cetera, then. We try to make it a processor procedure to only accept the most current versions. Um, for the applicants coming in the door, you know, nothing to be accepted if it's not the most up to date. Even if they have to stand there and redo it in front of you, I would encourage um, to make sure that we do that. Um, and just one other comment that I wanted to make. Um, I did not get my package until Thursday evening, um, prior to our meeting tonight. And so it really does not give me a, a lot of time to be able to review the information. So I, I know that things are busy with y'all, but I would really like to ask if there's any way that we could get those sooner. So we have more time to review. Um, but outside of that, everything that you put together and what you give us is always top quality. So I thank you for that. Um, I'm not trying to discount not getting it soon enough that, that the information isn't good. So, thank you.
You did make a change in your bylaws, um, when they were approved in January that they, the packets had to be out five days before the.
Was that calendar days or business days?
I don't think it specified.
Didn't specify.
We usually try to get them at least a week before, but um, we did have a little trouble getting them out this time. And I do apologize for that.
Yeah, I would really like for us to go back and, and revisit that, because I think that might have been something that I brought up in the past and. Um, as a concern and wanted to make sure that we had enough time. So I, I was thinking business days, not necessarily calendar days. So, um, if that's not specified, then, you know. Something that we can think about going forward. Thank you. That's all I have.
Um, just to piggyback on that, um, I would, I would like to have an email copy, uh, if it's possible, just. No, I know that sometimes we will get an email copy, but um, but it really helps me if I've got some downtime at work. Or if I'm in a place where I'm, I just don't have the, the hard copy with me, I can, I can spend a few minutes going through things that.
I can upload your copy.
Um, but otherwise, same, I mean, y'all put a lot of effort into these meetings, this packet with the um. Proposed changes that we've been talking about for several months now, um, is, is very uh, inclusive. So, um, I'll. Got some homework to do. Um, the uh, and, and. And we stand, appreciate Mr. Wagner, uh, having the, um. Give, throw us that curve ball, curve ball in the public hearing. But uh, that was a, a, a good catch right there and something that we've obviously now seen that, you know, we need to. Uh, address. Um, but um, but I'm thankful that, that he did catch it. And I'm glad that as a commission, we were able to work through that, uh, in a way that benefited the. The applicant and um, and our processes going forward as well. So, um, so I thought, I thought that. For, for a second there, I was wondering, what are we going to do here? So, um, so I was, I was glad that everybody was able to work together on that and, and, and get something through. Um. Outside of that, um, non-commission uh, related, the uh, girl softball won fourteen to one today. So they moved on to the semifinals. Just wait.
Uh, first, thank you for comments, Mr. Sluter. I do want to make it very clear that I had no intention of criticizing staff or anybody with the comments I made tonight. But it was an issue that I think we had with previously with the Simon's track. And I think it's an issue that needed to be cleared up. I will say that. Staff, this staff has done a great job of moving this. And the department forward. Uh, sometimes I think you need a little additional help. Uh, sometimes I think you need a little additional help, um. I do appreciate your efforts in going out to county, some of the different counties and getting information from them. I still wish you'd come up, Hannah, but, um. You don't have time to do it all. But, um. I think, as this turned out, we, we got that issue resolved for this, uh, project, for this. Proposal, and I think, uh, we can learn from that as we go forward. But, uh, I'm saying, thanks to planning commission members for y'all's indulgence.
Yeah, um, echo what everybody else said here. I would, I would like to say personally, I'm, I'm. I know we spend, seems like a lot of time on these ordinances, but. I feel like the, the more we discuss them, we get through them, we're really getting them dialed in. Which makes staff's lives easier, you know, ju- even this family division thing, that was coming up a lot, I know, so now it's. Specified, it's clear, it's in writing. We've talked about it, we've got it in there and it just, it's, it's time with very well spent. And I think we are putting together a zoning ordinance as we go through it step by step that is really detailed. And will, will help staff tremendously. Um, I've said it in the last two or three meetings, I will say it again. As far as staff goes and the efficiency and the turnaround, we really couldn't ask for anything more. Uh, from what I'm seeing in my day-to-day business. I will make a comment, um, something Sheri and I talked about, and it's kinda something. I would ask Mr. Ashcraft, but our biggest bottleneck right now is not the county, it's the other agencies we depend on. V dot and the Health Department that are really bottlenecking us on a lot of issues, and I don't know if that's something that you can help with or not.
Stuff with you, um, tomorrow, Christina came up with an idea and she has reached out to him. But I did wanna run by you, just waiting on the response back from you.
And, and I think to add to that, I mean, again, the, these guys here are trying as hard as they can. But I think a lot of times when, when they go to, to be that, they don't know if there's gonna be anybody there to receive what it is they're trying to drop off. There's no rhyme or reason, am I correct? For when someone's there, when someone's not there, it's kind of a shot in the dark.
Well, Christina has, does a lot of this on her own time, her own vehicle, her own gas. Um, you know, she had been meeting one of them at West Point, but he's no longer gonna be going to West Point anymore. Um, so that leaves her going all the way up to Saluda. Um, in the mornings or in the afternoons on her way to her home, so we've. She come up with something else that we're hoping will work. Um, so she's reached out to them and we're just waiting on the response back from them, see.
Okay.
Actually, everything everybody said, and thanks for people that came, like I said, always our good standbys around the audience. We have one new one. Remember, this month, we have Juneteenth celebration coming up, uh, and the L A C P is doing some kinda celebration down here. Near the courthouse or over.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, but right in front of the old courthouse. I know they have a car show, uh, Susan, Joe. Not sure what else was going on.
So if we can make it to that, um. Thank you everybody. Kinda thanks as always, Lord, and thank you, Mr. Wagner, bringing up these issues and. He said it is unfortunate, maybe we can get, we seem to be having trouble with. Internet, now we've got new tablets and like I said, stuff doesn't get on right, plus we, like, so we don't have enough staff, but that's because of the budget. Uh, but hopefully it'll all work out. Thanks, everybody for coming. Thanks for working with all y'all on the board. Been a privilege, so. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn? So, so move, we have seconds, I have a motion made, probably seconded. We have a roll call?
Mr. Kellam?
Hi.
Ms. Height?
Hi.
Mr. Wagner?
Hi.
Mr. Sluter?
Hi.
Cameron Brinwood.
Hi, we are now recessed. Thank you very much for coming.